Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susie, roll call please.
Councilmember Groves.
I am here.
Councilmember Chambers.
I am here.
Councilmember Salasweedot.
Here.
Councilmember Barkus.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here.
For the consent agenda, you want to remove B?
Which one?
The councilman.
Let's just wait until they draw.
Okay, well, I'm going to move the fire budget up to number B so that... Yeah.
Yeah, they don't want to stay on.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and I don't have any other changes. All right, I'll look for a motion then to accept the amended consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support discussion. Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salasweedot.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkus.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, you're up.
Perry Beecham, who is I in the city hall, I would encourage the public to attend the Coffee with Council, the first Saturday of each month from eight to 10 at the city chamber. It's a great opportunity to have a discussion with your council members. Again, this is public comment, it's not meant for an exchange, a conversations back and forth, but that's what Coffee with Council is. And this Saturday, there were three council members there along with a former mayor, council member, and current Person of the Year. So, and it's great having that, council members plus past council members, that you can bounce ideas off and get an understanding of how city government and everything works. I did bring up at that a couple items. One, I have a concern. The last council meeting, when the auditor came in and they talked about that the water sewer was seven hundred thousand, over seven hundred thousand in the negative, and it was explained that, you know, that was depreciation, wasn't cash. I still have concern with that because what depreciation is, is you're using that, the government allows you to depreciate the value of assets, and over time, what you're doing is you're using that up. And if you're, if you're over seven hundred thousand dollars in the negative, at some place down the road, you're going to need to reinvest in infrastructure and that, that money does show up at some place. So again, just, I have a concern about that, of having that information at once, you know, like, felt like it was not... That was the auditors that brought it to the attention, and again, the city needs to keep on top of that. Lastly, I talked about it, and I was, as everybody knows, I was upset there because on Friday, got my water bill and showed that there was arrears on there. And, and my wife usually pays all those bills, and she, on the long flight, liked paying it, going in and making that payment, having a conversation with people, wishing them a good day, bringing them in cookies, that type of thing. Yes, we could probably do it online, but you wouldn't have that contact. Again, and it came in the mail on Friday, so again, not a big deal, but, you know, now you got to sit on it all weekend, not knowing what's going on. Her comment was, "We've been paying our water and electric bill at Lowell Lake Power together for 44 years, and if it's a problem, she can change, she can do that, change in that, come to City Hall and pay it separately." Again, the other is, so I then went online, looked at my bill this weekend, and it still showed those things, arrears on there. I then, today, when, over the weekend, I contacted, was able to contact the general manager of Lowell Lake Power, he was going to look into it on Monday. We also happened to have an employee that was working there Saturday, so they were able to look into it to see where, where this fluke or whatever occurred. Since then, it's been corrected, and if you want, Charlie can give you an update of what, what occurred. It's not the first time, I know that one time it was Lowell Lake Power's fault. I believe that not be the case this time. And it was not only myself, but there was eleven, ten other customers that had the same issue. And again, Light and Power gets, when it's paid there, they kind of get the wrath of, "What did you do with my money?" type situation. Since then, I looked online, and again, I know none of you will, I'll have to go into City Hall, but now, the numbers have all changed on my, what, what I owe in sewer, what I, you know, what my current bill is. Originally, on the, on the printout example, sewer was twenty-four dollars, that's the service, to have the service, and then the cost was twenty-nine eleven on the print. Now, if I go online and look at it, it's now, again, the twenty-four, but it's now thirty-nine sixty-five. And I'm just, I, I don't understand, and I know you won't have that information, but again, we just need to do a better job, so, thank you.
Thanks, Perry. Anybody else? All right, no old business, new business, number A, Lowell.
Hello, thank you for having me here tonight. We like to come from the museum and give you a report once a year, just to kind of let you know what the past years looked like at the museum, so you all have a report in front of you. And I have some pretty pictures I was going to show you, but I'm just going to tell you all the fun stuff we've done instead tonight. We've had a really busy year. Every year, the museum sees all the first, second, third, and fourth graders in the school district for a variety of different historic programs that's connected with their curriculum. And so we're busy a good chunk of the year seeing students. And I wanted to give you some numbers. Keep in mind, we're a very small organization, we're largely volunteer run, we have three part-time people that are employed, but most of what we do is volunteer-led. That being said, we've really seen an expansion in our numbers over the past four years. We physically saw thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven people last year, so that's coming through our door, attending programs and different activities that we do. That's a huge number for a museum our size. But another area that we've seen a huge growth post-COVID was our online services and our online presence. When COVID hit, we had to try to figure out, how are we going to still get history into the hands of people? And so we started a number of online programs that have really just skyrocketed. And we've decided post-COVID that we're going to continue those services because they're getting used so much. So we've restructured how our staff uses their time, and we've got ABCs of Lowell History, which is a weekly article that goes out about some topic in Lowell history. This past year, we did an Alon Main Street series, where we did a feature on each of the buildings in the historic downtown. This year, we're going to be doing a lost Main Street, I don't know what the official title is going to be, but all the buildings that used to be on Main Street that are no longer here. And we're seeing just gigantic numbers coming out of that online. To give you an idea, our direct email goes out to about eight hundred people each week, and we had thirty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-nine people read those emails last year. That dwarfs in comparison to the number of people reading those same posts on Facebook. We had two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand people read our history posts. And looking at the data, it's, it's countrywide, it's not just in Lowell or West Michigan. We've got readership all over the place. We've seen a big upsurge in people that used to live in Lowell that are now living out of state emailing us with their memories and ideas for posts and sending us different research things that they've got in their homes. So it's really expanded our reach and some of the topics that have been coming in. In addition to that, we had over eight thousand people visit our website, and we've posted all of our oral histories that we've done online on our website, so you can now go see those anytime you want. And we had almost thirty-five hundred people look at those this year. So just some really clear numbers that show how much people in the Lowell area are interested in our history and how we're reaching them on a weekly basis, which I think is pretty exciting to see. So all in all, we had, we reached over three-hundred-and-thirty people, three-hundred-and-thirty thousand people last year, which is really just fantastic to see. We took in close to three-hundred artifacts into our collection, and our volunteers, I think, under-reported their hours, but they said they reported two-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-three hours, which is a big number, but I'm pretty sure they're under-reporting how much they're doing. So we've just been really excited. Our volunteer pool has really re-energized, and we've got a lot of really great people right now, working at the museum, doing everything from the education programs to the oral history interviews, to helping us with our school groups, just a lot of different avenues that, that people are involved with us in. In addition to all that, we do a public speaker series, where we bring in speakers who are experts in their field to talk about different topics in history. Last year, we did five. We had Captain Tim Elfson, who's the captain of the Edwin H. Goddard's Great Lakes Steamership. He actually lives here in Lowell when he's not on the boat, and he came and talked about what life on the boat is like in the shipping industry. We had a speaker from the Michigan State Library, talking about the county force system that used to exist and how that all worked. We did a tour at Oakwood Cemetery. Eric Hemenway, who is the director of Archives and Repatriation for the Little Traverse Bay Bands of Odala Indians, talked about the role the Native Americans in this area had in the Revolutionary War, which was just a fascinating talk. And then we had a speaker from Zealand doing a talk on women in the workforce in World War I. So we tried to do a lot of different topics throughout the year for all different age groups and all different ways that people access the museum. So without my pretty pictures, that is my presentation. We're excited, we've got our programs all lined up for this year. We're already deep into third grade tours, do an immersion program with third grade, where they come in for two days and learn about local history, or we've already completed one of the elementaries and maybe the other two upcoming. So it's been fun having the, the third graders at the museum. And they're always fun because they come back in on the weekends and bring their families in and give them a tour of the museum, which is always kind of fun to see how much they really absorbed, so. So we're excited to have that going on right now at the museum. And I just want to thank you all for your support, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any that you may have.
Good. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Corey, fire budgets.
Sorry about that. All right, good evening, everybody. Thanks for allowing me to come out here and present the budget for the fire department for next year. Yes, by all means, we are going through some transition phases. I think we all kind of realized that throughout the community, throughout the last at least few months. But even then, as I started to put together this budget, I'm hoping each one of you have something that looks like this packet. This is kind of the roadmap that I put together, and I went all in too much, for too long. I've been known to carry on for a long time, might attest to this, that it went for more than an hour or so just talking about the budget.
I have no complaints.
In general, it's, it's one of those that, in order to really focus on what we're doing going forward for the department, it was one of those that I wanted to at least open up what our, what we've done in the past, what our budget looked like in the past few years, as much as I could unpack, as well as where we currently are, to then start telling the story moving forward in the upcoming years. Because, you know, albeit we are growing, the community's growing, and therefore then at least we need to be able to put some of that knowledge dedication forward, what we've done and how that impacts us. So to go a little bit of detail on what you have presented in that spreadsheet going forward, is down that left-hand side there, I've kind of chunked it out into four different budgets, budget categories about salary, which is essentially our people, our operations, things that cost on the daily, communications, office supplies, operating supplies, training, so on and so forth. And professional services, the normal maternity fees, auditing, that type of stuff, memberships, insurance, and then of course, our maintenance, which is just R and M, whether it be to a building, fire equipment, or other miscellaneous type equipment there. On the very bottom, you'll see there's then capital expenses, and all the capital expenses in a little bit here. But that next column over from the left-hand, starting to go across, you just kind of read a book, that is what we're looking to request for this coming year for our budget, budget. And it's just kind of, I put that next to it just as a point of just reading across, especially I can say for myself, or just a general understanding that it makes sense. But otherwise, I use the color coordination then to a green, a red, yellow. Those are essentially, as you see across the top there, FY twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and that's just because the Fire Authority budget does run, for those that may not know, it does run from a July first to a June thirtieth budget. So that's just why that makes sense to carry it over those two years. Sometimes it's difficult to talk about just because of where it cuts in and being the Fire Authority with taking care of the two townships in the city. It's a very kind of mixed bag, and we start to win in understanding that. But that's at least when that Fire Authority budget takes place. If you start to, that center column, then, the center white column in blue there on top, that is our current budget this year that we are operating on. We're essentially halfway through that budget this year, and then as we'll move across. But as I want to kind of talk about, over the past three years, our past, where we come from, in terms of our personnel-type staffing, you can see that our part-time staffing slowly started to grow over the past few years, as well as you see a salary full-time. That's when we hired a full-time chief down there, went from part-time status, went to a full-time status, and you can see the salary began to increase over the past few years. With that, we also added more staffing to our force as well. We have also seen a major statistical increase with our call volume as well. With a paid-on-call staff, you will generally see probably an increase in that paid-on-call staffing cost. And I can dive into that a little bit more. But otherwise, the other two categories, as far as compensation, insurance, that's, that's, the FICA, that's the taxes, that's normal. That's just your normal, what you're going to see in, in general. If you go down to the next category, your operations. We haven't seen too many statistical increases with our operations over the past three years. There has been, just as I would say, your normal increases you may see with just the cost of living or anything like that, that has increased. Some of our larger ones that we have purposely increased is one of our training budgets. We've increased it just because we generally see training as one of the most important items of the fire department, being well-prepared is very important. So that's one of those increases you see down there. Otherwise, professional services, same thing, reading across. It's very much the same in COLA, just you see that increase that we have. R and M-wise, as you look down there, our actual spend to our R and M, we've had a few things over the past few years that have cost us a little bit more with our trucks. We've had some major repairs to that, so that is something we're looking towards in the future. Again, it tells a story of what we're looking at, of maybe having to increase the cost of what it is to take care of the fire trucks down there. It isn't necessarily cheap, and those are large pieces of iron, and it takes a little bit to take care of them. So takes us to essentially our current fiscal budget this year, where we are operating, and just to kind of highlight up there, when you see up at the top, that salary full-time, that salary full-time included what it was for a full-time chief, as well as then a paid administrator at the station as well. That was administrator person as well slash firefighter, kind of a mixed person there. Now, it's not divided out, so it's a little bit of gray of what that actually was there. And then, one of the biggest disparaging things there you'll see is when you get to the year, the year. Number eight, that time, that is our paid-on-call wages. Last year, we finished up our current budget as spending about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars for our part-time paid-on-call individuals. Currently, we're budgeted at a hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand. So by all means, yes, we are running a fiscal deficit right now. We are seeing that number probably going to land in that category again. I'm not going to stand here and tell you exactly what that is because I don't know. I have a good idea as the budget gets on, but more than likely, that is one of those statistical categories that we see as a budget increase, and we're currently at a shortfall right now, and that's, that's troublesome from where it stands. As far as anything else there, that's really stays the same. From an operational standpoint, our costs there, there is nothing currently really that jumps off the table of being too much different than what it is, staying within lines of our costs this year, where our budget. But again, we get under our professional services, there's a few things there with some of our legal fees and stuff that are going to be increased this year that need to be taken care, understandable with that as well, without dwelling on that too much. And then, of course, we get down to our maintenance, and that's another category down there. Currently in our maintenance, we've had a major truck repair this year. We had a pump go out in one of our engines, frontline engines. That's, that's again, a major increased cost, that's an overrun to our budget this year. And the reason I bring these up is because it tells us a story of what we need to look for going forward. So as I go to the next category, that green category column to the right is going to match up with the very first column next to all the different categories. What I did draw out in that budget there, as we look to then actually call out a part-time staff position, those are the two individuals that we have at the station every day from an eight to four standpoint. The time of day where we have the least amount of paid-on-call available, and we want to make sure that we at least have staffing available to respond to day-to-day calls as well. The chief salary there is then actually called out for an individual chief salary as well. And the same thing, as the department looks to hire a full-time chief, you'll see then two more categories of the compensation and the insurance to help fill that position for the chief as well. That's where that budget then you see is the increases from the previous year. If there wasn't anything in those categories, then that tells a story of, hey, this very non-full-time chief is going to incur some costs there. The other thing we did look to do is then rectify our issue with our part-time paid-on-call staffing. We did bring that budgetary number up and give the two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars a call, covered what we see is probably forecasting our needs for that category as well. That's one thing I want to dwell on too, is just a little bit, you know, some people might ask, is that's one of your biggest buckets for what you pay for every year is your part-time paid-on-call staffing? And most, everybody looks at that category and originally just says, oh, that just means what we pay to send individuals to emergency calls. There's a little bit, you dig into that a little bit more, and I really want to call off the fact that last year, we spent fifty thousand dollars in payroll to send our individuals to fire training. As I see is a valuable buy-in and absolutely extremely important item for someone, for me, that training is my most important thing I see in the department, that being a training officer down there for the longest time. By all means, you want to be prepared for any event we have here at Lowell, anything in the townships, it's one of the most important things. Being more prepared is anything, most frightening thing is going to any call and not being prepared. So we spent a considerable amount of money on that part of it right there. We also then spent another thirty thousand on that budget on our staff to have their duty weekends, where they come down to the stations, they inspect all of our trucks, they touch all the equipment, they go through all of the different items. They also then have team training on the weekends. So again, getting those paid-on-call people there at the station, which more often than not, if you drive by, you may see vehicles there on the weekends. Those are those individuals, they're coming down, they're spending their weekends, they're spending their time, and again, gives you all that opportunity of that buy-in of really having them down there. So it really breaks down to, I look at it, about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to have essentially thirty-four individuals, highly-trained individuals that are bought into the department that can respond. Really, it's one of those things, as, as I would say, is chief. Chief considering a fully-staffed firefighter, in some cases, may cost a hundred thousand dollars or more as a fully-versed firefighter. So if ever you see any one of those, please, thank them for their service. I can't thank them enough, again, they give me the ability to come up here and present this. They, they are the most important tool in my book to that department, is the people. The people make it happen. So that sense, that's why, again, that budgetary line item, you look at it, and it is rather high, and we have seen increases, but that is one of those things that I see is one of the most valuable things we can have in the department down there. As far as continuing on then, the operational costs, as we start to see going down, not a whole lot changed, other than just kind of leveling out what we forecast to see we're going to spend for our operations, for our equipment, communication, fuel. Those are normal, as we see kind of a COLA increase of that cost of living. So that seems about, falls in line there. As far as our professional services, again, same thing, leveling out those. What I really want to call out then is then the budgetary line item down in our maintenance. We have made the decisions and look to say, let's increase the cost of what we're, what we budget for truck repair. These trucks are very expensive. Getting close to that cost of just a standard engine is almost a million dollars. So when they break down, they aren't cheap anymore. So that's just one of those items that we look at of saying, let's make sure we budget accordingly, and we look at that. The other item is just a contingency fund, the just-in-case. Nobody likes to come back and say, we didn't have enough money, we didn't make it, so on and so forth. Put a contingency fund in faith, in place with the department, get some fund balance built up for those emergencies that may come up, so we can assess that and move forward. By all means, if you look at the very, very top line reads across, that is about an inventory increase year to year that you'll see on a percentage-wise. And if you look back in the history, again, you'll see a twenty-nine percent increase. That was a full-time chief that we brought in. Same thing with seventeen percent increase, that was having two-staffed individuals at the station every day. And then, of course, really, from the last year to this year's budget, we only had a two percent increase, which was probably low considering essentially what the cost of living increase has been, and probably should have increased it a little bit. So oversight there, but again, we'd like to make that correction going forward. But as you see, next year, there's a twenty-eight percent increase, and I'm calling that out again, as looking at, as we bring on the full-time chief, that benefits, compensation, everything that goes on with bringing that full-time chief again, is that budgetary increase there, as well as then, of course, the contingency fund, truck repair. So it does, it is a larger bucket item that we see going forward. And then, as I look to the future a little bit, just kind of start to paint a picture, and this isn't just a point of saying, this is going to be what's going to happen, this is discussion points. These are things up there, and again, I welcome any of your questions that you may have to that. As we look to that next twenty-five, twenty-six budget year, I did call off the position of the possibility of a fire inspector. That is a position that we don't have at the station and don't cover very well. There are a lot of businesses in our area that we need to be assessing, we need to be taking care of this, these, these businesses, making sure that they're following the rules and regulations, getting in there. Again, goes back to that, as much as we train to prepare for it, we should do the prevention side of it as well, making sure that we're following through with the rules and regulations in our area. And so those are those couple highlighted items of what it takes to then bring on a salaried fire inspector. Again, I'm not going to say at this point that that's concrete, it's just a possibility for us to at least focus on a direction that that should be something we include in the budget going forward. Otherwise, you'll see more of just kind of a standard COLA increase, about three and a half, four percent increase, that budget year to year. I really called it out a little bit more into that twenty-seven, twenty-eight range. At some point, we need to look at having more of a full-time-staffed individuals instead of our part-time down there on a day-to-day basis. We are blessed to have individuals that are wanting to fill those positions on a day-to-day basis, but we definitely have to consider at some point that there would be some type of full-time staffing there. Doesn't mean we may not supplement it in other ways with more part-time availability, but our call volume and the amount we are running has demonstrated that, by all means, yes, we need to consider these things. Just as a picture of, again, what we are and where we're going forward, and you'll see that twenty-eight, twenty-nine, again, just a standard COLA increase. But I'll go back to then just for our next budget for next year in a comparison basis, just for a little bit of understanding. This past year, we ran a total of one thousand one hundred and eighty-three calls. For comparison sake, Caledonia Township ran twelve hundred calls, about right on par with them. They have staffed people twenty-four hours a day, two individuals with a full-time chief, full-time inspector. Their annual budget on the year is one-point-three million. So when we look at ours, it's saying seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, I think we're getting a good deal right now. We have a lot of good people there, but I do see some, foresee some budget increases that we'll have to look at. Some other troubling points we see, just future-wise that we see is, if we do start staffing, staffing... staffing, staffing around the clock, what does that look like for living quarters in the facility? Again, discussion points, these are big things, big items that we look at and nuggets going forward. But if we don't start looking at at least budgeting, what that looks like going forward to paint the picture, it's going to be very hard to get there. So, a lot went into this, just in terms of our operating budget with payroll and everything like that. Any questions right here? That's a lot to unpack.
Have the other township seen this yet, or were you the first ones?
Lowell Township, I delivered this to Lowell Township a couple of weeks ago.
And their response?
Their response was very positive. They were very pleased to have a report like this, to give them a little bit of a forecast of what we're looking at, especially when you say the developments in the townships, in the city, what they may see, yeah, this is, this is very helpful for them.
The other question that I thought of capital was the fuel expenses. I think, was it last year we had to give more money, there were certain things, more runs you did, cost of fuel went up? So I just kind of wondered what you put into your ideas to make sure the fuel is covered because it continues to rise.
Yeah, very good point. So it is always one of those things you try to look at and say, what are going to be our big buckets that are going to start costing us more money? Which again, kind of goes back in that reasoning and saying, we need to build some fund balance, we need to be fiscally responsible, put a contingency fund in place, so we have something to draw back to. But at the same point, you know, the truck repair was a couple of years ago, was one of those big items that we looked at, and that was one of those exhaust systems on these vehicles, very expensive, very troublesome. So the same point, this year now, where we looked at a pump on the apparatus getting replaced. So again, large type bucket items. And we understand too, the same thing, this for us is a budget, and it's one of those that we got to be fiscally responsible from the department level to making sure we stay in here. So it's stay into that budget line item, stay responsible, making sure we stay within that budget. It's not just free money you spend every day.
And you may not know this, when I heard the new truck is out of warranty already, is that true?
That is not the case.
That's part of it, it's out of warranty, Mike?
No.
Did you say that something, we just had to fix something and had cost on that?
Was paid for the pump repair.
The pump repair is on engine two.
Oh, engine two, not engine.
Yeah, our brand new engine is engine one.
Sorry.
No, not the new one.
Engine one is our county truck.
Right.
That is our main frontline engine we use on a daily basis, you may see a run around town. And that truck, again, is county truck, so most, everything on that truck is covered by us being a part of the county, county fire commission. So, any repairs we have, that means that goes out and gets repaired through the county, and that's usually their dime. So.
Corey, I have a question. You mentioned training, and of course, that's super important. Your spend last year was 23.6, you're requesting, if I'm reading this right, this year is 21.
So, you are reading that absolutely correct. So that training line item you see there, that is a line item we use to pay for all the classes. So if I'm to send somebody to an EMT class, that is the cost of the class, that does not cover the wages that go towards it. So when I talk about the wages we spent, that is $50,000 in wages of paying somebody to go to classes or in town. So that line item there, the reason you may see that higher from last year to this year is the number of people we bring onboard on an annual basis. Couple of years ago, we had the opportunity to bring on five individuals, which then saw that raise a little bit higher than normal. On the annual, we budget for individuals to go through fire school, EMT school, as well as then having some officer classes and some instructor classes. On average, we see most individuals who bring them on for paid on call, five years is kind of that run of the mill, that usually at that point, you kind of cross that bridge. Do you want the longevity, life gets a hold of them, they get opportunities to go elsewhere? Which again, I value that. I want to empower somebody, train them up, give them skills, give them ability, maybe Lowell isn't the end of the line, and they can take this and go somewhere else. And if we have that ability to really tag the department and saying, yeah, go Lowell, you're going to get some great training, great opportunity, run some calls, a little bit busy of a department out there, and then that kind of draws you into a larger city department that wants some experience, by all means, these young kids from high school, if that opportunity is out there, let's do that, let's get them in, let's get them involved with that. So, one of those questions that Lowell Township also asked me too, is, you know, at this point in time, do we look to increase the roster? We're at 33 members on the roster. Right now, I'm okay with our membership on the roster, that's a lot of rabbits to chase, to be honest with you, but it is one of those things that again, as we start to grow, we analyze that we may need to see that that needs to increase, but at this point, it's kind of one of those unfolding fast where we are.
So your total training budget, I'm hoping it's increasing, and about by how much? And how many of your personnel can go to training next year?
So, you bring a very good point there with training. This is now one of those that I want to be very careful. Time, family time, life, balance, all of this has to work. And there is a certain amount of training and of time and ability that everyone has during the month. As paid on call firefighters, you are asked, on Lowell's department, you are asked to cover one week a month. When I say cover that one week a month, you divide it into 14, we essentially say four weeks a month. You will have six to seven individuals on that team. You will be asked to respond to calls from 6:00 PM till 5:00 AM that next morning. At the end of the month, the average individual during that timeframe will probably run about 12 to 15 calls. That includes their call week or whatever calls they have in between there. We also then have two mandatory trainings a month. So if you take their about 12 hours, some calls run over, they get about 15 hours out of those runs they go on. They train two Saturdays a month, that's another four hours, I'm putting them at about 30 hours then in a month, and then I add on their duty weekend timeframe that they put down there, they end up to be about 35, 40 hours a month that they're spending down at the department in terms of just not only running calls, training, and then if there's anything extra I put in there, for the average individual, it gets exhausting. I want to be very careful of that work life balance, because it burns somebody out very quickly. And by all means, there's unique opportunities that we've had to send individuals to a lot of good training, live fire training. We have had at least three events where we've had live fire training, and that's probably one of the most important training that you have out there. That's one of those that I've gone to school to get trained in live fire type of training to instruct that. The state does not require firefighters to get done with firefighter one and two and even go through live fire training. So we see as that one of those items where to get individuals and students through that type of live fire, tremendously important, tremendously important. So that goes back to that balance of why you say, do I want to increase it? Oh, by all means, I would. But I think my wife would also say, enough's enough, I want to see your home as well. So, that's that balance that I want to say, it's got to work for everybody else. When you ask somebody to put another 40 hours in a month, and essentially you're saying, I need 10 hours a week out of you, it gets to be a lot. If they're working a 40 to 15 hour a week, their kids, their wife, whatever family they might have, that gets to be exhausting. So I, by all means, I encourage all of them, please, please find ways, take time off. The team's big enough and large enough where we have a lot of individuals that can respond to fill the gaps, but it's also one of those very rewarding items that when we do have a larger type incident, that people show up. You know, most of the department is available and shows, shows up. As an example to that I can use, when we had storms come through with tornadoes this past summer, we ran a total of about 120 calls that evening. They didn't all get documented in there, but I had at least eight apparatus out in the community, township, city, clearing trees, wires down, marking them, everything like that throughout the entire evening. We had 30 individuals at the station. They worked almost the entire evening, and by that morning, you wouldn't have any idea that there were trees down all over the place and all over the roads and blocked and couldn't get anyone. So, that value we have, tremendous. To have that amount of people is absolutely invaluable. If you hear it out in the fire service nowadays, the paid on call, people are desperate for them, they can't get enough. You may have heard in the news recently that Walker had to shutter a station during the evening because they don't have enough paid on call to fill that. So, again, as I go back to, I consider us to be lucky, we're the anomaly to the system. But that's just one of those of building a good culture, having a good work life balance, understanding that it's not just being down there all the time. Find your time away, find your time to relax, but also when you're down there, let's buy in, let's do the job, let's get in, let's get out. So, very important, good question. So, I have to say, the original budget presentation, I can't dispute anything he's saying, and these are issues, these are needs. From a budgetary standpoint, our, I believe two years ago, we were contributing to the fire authority, I want to say $118,000. Currently, we're, that was right before the chief came in full time, I believe it went up to about $140,000. And then, this year's about $187,000 before whatever extra cost has to come in, and then we're looking at $230,000 next year, just in our share for the operations. The issue is also, is obviously we are still responsible for capital. Something we've been doing for the last few years is, we've been setting aside $25,000 every year in a fire capital fund, so when these equipment stuff come up, we have, we have money to kind of help, so we're not just, it's not causing a big strain on the budget when the time comes. The capital allocation is going, you know, from his formula, is gone from $25,000 related to about $66,000. So, we're looking at about $300,000 a year for fire service next year with this budget. I understand it, it needs to be done, just understand that, you know, we're probably going to have to a little Robin Peter to pay Paul to address this at the time when the budget comes. I don't know exactly what it's going to be yet, I kind of have an idea in my mind what it's going to be. It's probably going to, you know, but I don't dispute everything he's saying, it's needed. And, you know, I, but I, you know, I think long term, that, you know, we're, this is something that, the way, I mean, the way the fire, you know, the way the fire authority is funded, it might even be looked at differently at some point. I don't know when, but it just, I, I think it's, I think it's growing, I mean, the area is growing, their call line is growing, there's a demand for service that, I don't know when this was first concocted, this was really thought into, I don't know, it was before my time, but when you look at the numbers and look at what, what the history is, it's going to at some point even be addressed.
Agreed.
So, I don't know how much you want me to go into the capital fund, or if there's kind of, those were the other two sheets, if you want to. Good?
Yeah, that's, and we meet on the 15th, so.
Yeah.
If you want more information, feel free. Thanks, Corey.
Corey, I'd like to just add, I read your resume from the fire report, the annual report, and your instructor two certification, that's incredible, what you've had to go through to achieve that level, so thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, thank you for your time.
Great to go. All right, number Steve, affordable house.
Brooke Osterman is from, Brooke Osterman from Housing Next is here tonight. I reached out to them months back about how we can start looking at more, how to try and address affordable housing within the city. It's kind of a three-pronged approach, but she's going to talk to you about a little greater detail tonight. I think we have an opportunity in our city, we don't have, we're not going to have any type of subsidized government housing or anything like that to address it, but I think we have an older housing stock, but I think there's opportunities as, as that older housing stock gets converted and then through zoning, we might be able to do some things to try and tackle this need, so that's kind of where I brought Housing Next in, and Brooke is here to talk to you kind of about that.
I've never had to move the microphone up, so. Hi, everyone, thank you for having me this evening. Again, my name is Brooke Osterman, I'm with Housing Next, the executive director there. If you aren't familiar with Housing Next, we're a cross-sector partnership, we are a nonprofit organization that works in Ottawa and Kent counties. Our mission is to move housing supply solutions forward in light of the critical housing shortage. So, we do all of our work based on housing needs assessment, so we first look at the data of where there is the most demand, where there is the most need in the community, and then we identify solutions with our municipality partners, as well as for-profit and nonprofit developers to try to come up with some innovative solutions. So, we're really excited to be welcomed into the community this evening and hope to serve as a resource to all of you going forward. We are a free resource to the community, and so we would love to, you know, support in any way we can moving forward. As was teed up, we do have a critical housing shortage that you probably are all aware of. Not only are we short on houses, but house prices continue to increase here in Kent County. We updated our most recent housing needs assessment at the end of 2022 and started sharing that data out beginning of 2023. And just to give you all kind of some light in where we're at as a county, first of all, when I was hired on in March of 2022, we were responsible for coming up with solutions to combat a 37,000 unit shortage in Ottawa and Kent County over the next five years. And then, just two years later, our data showed that it was now a 35,000 unit shortage just in Kent County, and so a 50,000 unit shortage in Ottawa and Kent County that we're looking to combat. So, when we're having conversations, we're looking at the overall challenges that we face as a community. We know that we underproduced as a nation, housing for decades, we know that interest rates are not helping, we know construction costs are going up, we know there's labor shortage, right, cost of materials are going up, so there are a lot of things impacting why we have such a critically high number. In addition to that though, we also, different than what you're seeing nationally in a restless state, we have population growth that is projected, and we also have household growth that's happening. So we have a lot of great things happening in the community, Lowell included in all of that, but of course, that does mean that as we look forward, we do need to be conscious of how we're creating more affordable, more attainable opportunities for the workforce. So I mentioned the 50,000 unit shortage, or the 35,000 unit shortage here in Kent County. We know that there is demand at all price points, so we know that there are housing units that are deeply affordable, that are needed, you know, the market rate, we have a high need, but actually, our largest segment of demand, and larger than both other of those demands I mentioned before, market rate and deeply affordable, is middle income households. So that is our greatest demand, our greatest level of need here in the community over the next couple of years. Those are households making up to $100,000 a year that cannot find any housing options, right? So those are teachers, public safety, that is hospitality workers, I mean, a lot of folks are impacted by that, and a lot of people want to live here in Lowell, especially with all the great things that continue to happen, the growth that's expected over the next couple of years. So what I'm excited about is that, you know, a couple of years ago, we would have just come here and we would have shared that we have a critical housing shortage, we need to look at the things that we can control, i.e. zoning reform, we still do need to look at that, but there are some new tools over the last year that Housing Next has been advocating for at the local level and at the state level that are part of the solution that I just wanted to kind of share with all of you, so that you're aware of it. Why we talk about zoning reform so often is because we know that it is one of the things at the local level with all those other challenges that we talked about, that we can control for, that we can allow for maybe smaller units, smaller lot sizes, and that, that alone will increase affordability, but will not require any additional subsidy, right? So that's an opportunity from a zoning reform perspective, you know, accessory dwelling units are things that a lot of individuals and municipalities are talking about right now, is another opportunity. So I can share kind of our list of best practices for high-growth markets like this community, but what I also want to talk to you about is that there are actually local resources right now for that zoning reform, and so as you look forward, if you are interested in allowing for more housing typologies, that way you can have people access the market, you can have more mobility for our aging population. We actually, Housing Next administer a program called the Kent County Municipal Grant Program, and it's a grant and reimbursement for those changes. So whether it's master plan changes, ordinance changes, we can reimburse the cost of that. And so it allows for you as a community to look at the growth that's coming, look at the need that's already here, and say, we want to plan for that, we want to be prepared for that, and there are limited resources for that. And so, all of the communities in